Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
You may be seated. I bring you all greetings from southwest Ohio, Cincinnati, and Shayla Moore's hometown of Huber Heights in Dayton, Ohio. What a wonderful occasion to be here to see and hear my niece Shayla Moore be sworn in as a council member in the iconic city of Columbus. And you truly are iconic. You lead the way. And once Shayla's sworn in, she'll show you how God is leading her way. I am one of six sisters born to my mother and father, Martin and Ethel M. Poor. And out of those sisters and brothers, we have nine. And Sheila Moore, Shayla Moore's mom. She went to heaven several years ago. Had she been here today, she probably would be in my place. And we just know that God is truly blessing her as He is blessing us. Bringing the welcome and the greetings from the Moore family, Shayla Moore, Favor. Greetings from Martin Poor family, that's our family. Jenny is here, Jennifer, Shayla's sister, her baby sister. I remember the days of Pampers, Shayla, stealing butter out of my mother's refrigerator. Butter, pure butter, she just loved it. And I guess that's why she said, "One day, I'm gonna be a cook." But then she told me later on, she said, "I'm going to become an attorney." We kind of laughed because everybody has an idea of what you want to be. She carried her mom's big purse, designer purses, and those were her briefcases. And sure enough, from Wayne High School in Huber Heights to Columbus, the Ohio University in Columbus, Capital Law School. She went to Chicago, and she studied food, culinary arts. But she came back, and of course Cory was always in her life, that Favor man right there. In her life, and they collaborated. And Shayla said, "I'm going to law school." And the dream became true for Shayla and many in our family because, you know, everybody's family doesn't have an attorney. And we're so proud of Shayla today. And we know, today is just the beginning. Today is the beginning. Now, the big issue is between now and November. This girl's gotta get elected. She's gotta get elected. So I live in Cincinnati, I may have to change my residency so I can vote for her. And my husband looked really funny there. But truly, as I sit down and take my seat, so much I could say. But do me a favor, okay? Vote for this girl.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmony of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it roll on loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has brought us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has taught us. Facing the rising sun of a new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won.
All right, how y'all doing? What a great day and occasion to be here. I'm Zach Klein. I'm the Columbus City Attorney. Used to work with Shayla. Now I'm working with Shayla because she'll be a member of the City Council as soon as she gets sworn in here. But I think it's just a tremendous honor to serve as the emcee, the master of ceremonies for someone that I respect, that I look up to, and I know for sure is going to be an amazing member of Columbus City Council. We're all familiar with the very common path of culinary school to law school to members of city councils. So I won't bore you with the details because it happens all the time. But the very likely, or perhaps improbable, journey that everyone that is unique to partake in a path of life never know what the calling is. And that Shayla has heard the calling, and I think that the council members in making a selection to replace the Honorable Jaisa Page has made a tremendous choice in selecting someone who's dedicated to the community, is knowledgeable, is passionate about the success of neighborhoods and families and children. And I can't wait to work with her in a new role as someone on the member of the Columbus City Council who may actually oversee the committee from an oversight perspective of the City Attorney's Office. So I really think she's great. And I really think everything she does is amazing. But at this time, I want to recognize some elected officials, a couple of whom are on the program that we're going to hear from shortly. Herschel Craig, State Senator Herschel Craig is here. The Honorable Kimberly Coe-Crawf, the Columbia Police Court is here. I know Jaisa was here, the Honorable Jaisa Page. Here she is. I see former colleagues from the Zone Unit in the City Attorney's Office who are with Shayla in the trenches, and members, is anyone else that's an elected official besides the members of Columbus City Council, which I'll get to in a second. I want to introduce my former colleagues, Councilmember Emmanuel Remy, Councilmember Mitch Brown, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, Councilmember Michael Sensiano, soon-to-be county auditor, Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, and of course, the Council President Shannon Harden. So welcome to Council Chambers. So at this time, I'd like to bring forward a former colleague and current State Senator
Let us pray. Great is thy faithfulness. Morning by morning, new mercies we sing, all that we have needed, thy hands have provided. Dear Lord, you have been thy dwelling place for all generations. Dear God, we gather here on this auspicious occasion for the swearing-in of Shayla D. Favor as a member of Columbus City Council. She is brilliant, remarkable, and a committed public servant. But most of all, and most important, is a woman of faith. God, we know that she is prepared for this new, important experience and journey in her life. But God, when her days seem long filled with daunting and challenging demands from personal and professional obligations, strengthen her resolve to seek the common good, to do what is right and just for all the residents of our city, rather than what is popular or expedient. While we have many extraordinary and exceptional things to be proud of in our city, we still have those with great need, those on the margins, those most vulnerable among us. God, we pray for your covering and protection over her husband Cory, perfect everything that concerns this wonderful couple. Finally, God, we pray for Shayla's family and all assembled here today to observe and witness this great proceedings. God, please keep us all in your loving care and protection. Amen.
So as you see on your program, the next section, "Service is a Calling." And that is such a true statement. And we all can serve in different capacities. It doesn't have to be elected officials. We can serve as members of the Zone Team, serve as police officers, firefighters, serve at our local church or in our community. But service is something that's personal, and it's something that each one of us uniquely strive to do to make our community and our neighborhood safer. So the next three voices you're going to hear are going to talk about, I think, key components of service: leadership, community, and service yourself. You're going to hear leadership from Council President Shannon Harden, community by Marshall Shortz, and service by Steve Dunbar. So Councilmember Harden, Council President Harden.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Council Chambers. It's certainly an honor to be here today. We are thrilled, thrilled for this amazing occasion. It's funny, I last week was at the swearing-in of now Judge Jaisa Page, and our former City Attorney was swearing her, was the emcee for that ceremony. And today, for Councilmember Favor, the current City Attorney is swearing a sin. But luckily for us, our current City Attorney is not as much of a smack talker as our former. For folks who were there, it was a pretty lively swearing-in ceremony. But on behalf of my colleagues in Columbus City Council, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, Mitch Brown, Emmanuel Remy, Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem Sensiano, and Councilmember Shayla Favors, yes, Councilmember Shayla Favors. Doesn't that sound good? Doesn't that sound good? Welcome to this chambers, to the family, to Cory. Congratulations, congratulations. I told Councilmember that this day should be special for elected officials, for folks who are serving. You only get sworn in for your first time once, and so this is a very, very special occasion. Former Atlanta Mayor Shirley Franklin once said that "leadership is too difficult not to do the hard things." And I think about that idea a lot, especially when it comes to the next generation of public servants. It's not easy to raise your hand for public service, to welcome endless scrutiny into your life, both personal and professional. Yet Councilmember Favor raised her hand to serve and to lead. She's ready to attack the evasive problems like affordable housing, stagnant wages, as well as racial and class inequities. Councilmember Favor represents the growing generation of African-American leadership in our city. And as we have new leadership, it's important to recognize that we stand on the shoulders of local leaders like Joyce Beatty of Fellow Delta, as well as Mayor Coleman, Janet Jackson, Ben Espy, Jerry Hammond, Ray Miller, Charlita Tavares, and our very own Mitch Brown and Priscilla Tyson. They taught us so much about leadership. I believe what Mayor Franklin said, "Leadership is about doing the hard things," is real. We can all list the many challenges that face our city, from racial and economic segregation, the opioid epidemic, violent crime, police, and community relations. Now is the time to challenge past precedents and traditional wisdom. Some may ask if our city is up for the challenge. Are we ready to lead the nation in doing these harder things? Are we willing to resist what is politically expedient, invest in our long-term future? Are we willing to commit to radical collaboration? The answer is yes. The answer must be yes, because if not us, then who? When Washington DC decides to retreat and shut its doors, cities must step up. When the State House ignores the plight of our most vulnerable people, cities must step up. Our community needs more leaders, and Councilmember Favors has stepped up. She has answered the call to lead. She is ready. One last thing I would say to Councilmember Favor. As someone who sat where you sat not too long ago, and I will say, this is a little inside baseball, the difference of being appointed and swearing in. For me, it took me a while to get comfortable, or in my mind, I said, you know, "I will get there when I win my first election." Let me tell you that because of our city charter, you're going to be sworn in today as a council member, which means you need to lead starting today. You are here for a purpose, for a time such as now, and we need you. We need your voice. We want you to listen, we want you to learn, but we want you to be authentically you. For every conversation in every room that you are in, you are there for a purpose. We are so, so honored to have you as part of our team. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Y'all bear with me, they got me being civic today. I was hoping Councilman Shannon would introduce me. Short story, for about two years, every time I would see him, he would call me Martin. And I never corrected him until Judge Page overheard him one day, and she was like, "Who is he talking to?" And I was like, "My name is Martin, but I have a great deal of respect for him." And now he just doesn't even say my name. He's just saying, "What's up, brother? How you doing?" So, but he's the only one that gets that pass. But I'm honored to be here today, to honor my good friend, who I've known probably half my life now. That's crazy to say. And I'm here to talk about community. I'm sorry, all respect to all the elected officials in the room and all the accolades that should be given. But I'm here to talk about community today. And so I wrote some things down because I'm nervous, and I don't want to ramble. So it's an honor to stand before you in City Council on behalf of my good friend, Councilwoman Shayla D. Favor, someone who embodies the concept of community and gives to her community unselfishly. I take that word very seriously, and I know that Shayla does as well. Community is a word often used too commonly. It means different things to different people in different contexts. In city chambers, it may reference the city of Columbus or a particular neighborhood. But today, I challenge us to consider a deeper meaning and understanding and practice of that word. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. admonishes us to consider community. In his words, "Whatever affects one of us directly affects us all indirectly. I can never be what I ought to be until you are what you ought to be. This is the interrelated structure of our reality." End quote. Many quote the first two sentences, and although they pack a powerful reality, the last sentence is often overlooked or not mentioned at all. And that is, this is the interrelated structure of reality. It completes this thought. It is a call to action of sorts, a period at the end of a sentence, maybe. And I don't have a way with words like Dr. King, but to me, he is demanding us to recognize that this is our reality, whether we agree with that thought or disagree. That regardless of your thoughts about your neighbor, that our struggle and triumph is interconnected. He is challenging us to reach in, reach back, reach out, and reach down. Reaching in requires that we know ourself and what we believe about our community. Reaching back means that we recognize that every community has an origin story, and that we should give due diligence to recognizing and respecting that history. Reaching out is recognizing that isolation can be dangerous, that building walls, whether literal or invisible, is a detriment to our city and our existence as human beings. Finally, reaching down requires that we lift as we grow, that if one of us is without, then all of us suffer. Community, to me, requires commonality, community, and unity, and most of all, accountability. When these attributes are present, community is undeniable. So as I close, there's a Bandi African proverb that says, "Sticks in a bundle are not easily broken." Each of us has a part to play in building a real and thriving Columbus community. Shayla plays her part every day, for those of us that she knows directly, and even though she doesn't have a direct relationship with. Having known her 15-plus years now, I met Shayla in college, I can confidently say that she embodies the definition of community that I'm talking about today in her daily walk, and she is invested in empathy for those of our community on the fringes. Shayla, thank you for being an example. I'm gonna try not to cry. As I get older, I become more of a crybaby. I don't know, man. But thank you for your service, your willingness to serve. You are my sister, and your community has your back. This new chapter will require community more than ever. You will face challenges you probably never faced before, but to you and all y'all out there, we got her back, just letting y'all know. So I challenge all of us to build communities that thrive and to keep in mind that what affects one of us directly affects us all. Thank you. Love you.
So a couple of years ago, Shayla and I are going to just kind of a routine meeting out at one of the companies who does our title searches for our nuisance abatement lawsuits. We had driven separately, so walking out of the meeting, and I don't remember exactly what we were talking about. I do remember I was her direct supervisor at the time, and she says, "Hey, Steve, I think we should do this." I said, "Well, I'm not sure if we should." She says, "Well, why don't we just skip the whole thing where you say no, and then two weeks later, come to my office and say, 'Hey, what about this really good idea?'" And so I do this a lot as I'm listening to other people. Council President Harden said, "From day one, we want you to be heard." So you are going to get that. I am going to miss sitting down in Shayla's office and talking to her tremendously. I am maybe one of the few people here who is just busted up like crazy about her going to City Council because we are losing her from our day-to-day group. We would talk about things, and we were talking about service, public service, even when we didn't know it. And as I prepare my remarks for today, as I think about this, this is what sets Shayla apart from so many people. It is a deep understanding of the concept of service. It is an understanding of service that starts with, if life is a hundred-yard dash, the day you are born, the moment you are born dictates whether you start on the starting line, 10 yards ahead, 10 yards behind. Something that, and that's not everything, but a big part of it, too much of it, depending on where you're born, who your parents are, the color of your skin. We talked a lot about how, as public servants, you know, people are forced to pay us, like it or not. I mean, these paychecks, there's a line that says, it doesn't say it, but it's "to Steve, to Shayla." I mean, sometimes we don't think of it that way, but that is money from people who may need that desperately to pay for food, to pay for clothes, to pay for their kid's college. They give that to us to serve. That type of service, that understanding of service is special, and it's rare. And with that comes a solemn obligation, an obligation to deliver. We can talk about doing the right thing, we can have meetings, we can think about it, and all of those can be part of the process, but we must never, ever forget, above all else, we must deliver. That means, in our world, we deal with the nuisance abatement properties, you go to folks. You listen to folks, even if you're uncomfortable, even if the situation is not great. You go listen to someone say, "That house down the street is a drug house," or "A vacant house," to my stomach. I am sick when I think about that house, when I think about my kids walking by that house. You tell that person, "It's my job to take care of that, and I'm going to do it." You deliver. We've been fortunate enough, Shayla and I, to work with a group of attorneys that really lives by that. But I would tell you, Shayla is different even within that group. Shayla has a deep understanding of service that has benefited the city of Columbus tremendously in the role she has now. Shayla has a deep understanding of service that will benefit the city of Columbus even more as she advances through her career. When you come across someone who is that special, who has that kind of understanding of what they are doing and why they are doing it, you support that person with everything you have. We have done that to this point. I ask everyone in this room to do the same thing. Shayla Favors is exceptional in every single way. She is going to continue to be so. And again, we must support people like this. They don't come around often. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President Harden, Marshall, I got you, Marshall, and Steve. I got your back. I got your back. Now we're going to have a poem selection by Barbara Phan.
I told Shayla that I was going to do something, but as the Lord of my life and creativity should have it, at 1:00 a.m., something else came. So I'm going to do this piece. It's called "Even Now, Live for the Journey." She opens up her hands full of seeds, and her hands become the seeds. When the world opens its mouth and the mouth becomes a garden, the tongue bleeds into a river, and the neighborhood is a swarm of sirens and honey all at the same time. Can you hear the sounds, the voice of those yearning to be heard and a willing vessel hungry to listen? At the intersection of injustice and opportunity, the front line of sacrifice, what does it mean to be servant? To lay down your back, for your spine to be bridged, to lay for someone else to walk across, and what does it mean? To be sacrificed and embedded in community all at the same time? To understand the law and desire to protect those who are being harmed by it, to love your city? But know it can be greater to raise your family and want to raise awareness in your community, to be a voice in the face of every voice trying to silence you? To answer the call and live for the journey, even when you may not know where it will take you? Yet if the power of life be in this tongue, then we can speak to our purpose until we see it being done. And we give life to this purpose even when the road is hard and long. But my dear sis, you were built for such a time as this, equipped to fulfill every mission landing at your fingertips, and all God needed was a yes. So tell freedom she cannot have her throat back today, that we are carrying her for yet another day, and today, we declare this a new day. God be witness, and the fire in belly, a riot fistful of fight and heavy, and this is what it means to serve, to be voice for those that have none. It is to listen to the cries of community, to carry community in your backbone. It is to be the home and the house, the shelter and too often, the storm. To be both target and lighthouse, the blade and the cutting board, the breaking and the binding, the brokenness and the bomb, and to be all of this, bent inside one body all at the same time, to be bridge, to open up your hands full of seeds, to become the seeds and the planter. This river of a community will hold you up, and we will wrap our arms around you as you stand in all your glory and as you speak in all your glory. We stand in agreement as God says, "Why, yes, my servant, well done." And already, at this beginning moment in the journey, "Why, yes, even now, my daughter Shayla, well done."
Okay, it's oath of office time. You ready?
Yeah.
All right. So here's how we're gonna roll here. We're going to have a call to the podium by Sharon Miles. Judge Coecroft is gonna administer the oath. We'll have remarks by newly council member Shayla Favor, and then a musical selection. So, Judge?
Well, good afternoon to everyone. Good afternoon, everyone! Thank you. My name is Kimberly Coecroft. I am one of 17 judges in the Franklin County Court of Common Pleas General Division. I'd first like to thank Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, Councilwoman Tyson, Councilwoman Elizabeth Brown, Councilman Mitch Brown, Councilman Remy for inviting me into their chamber. And let me also thank Councilwoman Favor for asking me to be a part of this wonderful day. So I was raised in a Baptist church. I'm a judge. I can be extra verbose and loquacious when I want to, and I'm feeling like I want to today. Because I just want to share a few thoughts about Ms. Favor. I've actually known her for a little over 10 years. And when I met Shayla, she was working at a law firm here in the city. And I can say, being a black woman in a law firm environment can be a very lonely and difficult process at times. And so Shayla would reach out to me occasionally, and we would correspond about her journey and what she was doing with her life. And I was always so proud of and pleased with her process in the legal community. And when she decided to apply for this opportunity, we had a quick conversation, and I told her, "Just pray about it, do what's in your heart, follow your own path." And what I would say to you, Councilwoman, is that sometimes our purpose is found on paths for which we did not plan and in places for which we have not prepared. And I certainly believe that your ascent to city council is a part of your purpose. Everything that you've gone through, the pain of your process, has birthed this purpose. And so I'm so tremendously proud of you, so proud to be a part of this moment on today. So if you are ready officially to take the oath, who will be joining you?
This is my mother-in-law, Sharon Miles.
All right. So have you all come up? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Shayla D. Favor.
I Shayla D. Favor.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of member of city council.
Of member of city council.
Of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
Of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
In said office.
In said office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Y'all sit down, please. So I've been trying to keep it together all day because there's photographs. And my face cannot be looking crazy on the Columbus Dispatch. To city attorney Zach Klein, former city attorney Richard C. Pfeiffer, and the entire city attorney's office, I have had the pleasure to work as a law clerk, as an intake officer, as a paralegal, and as an attorney. And it truly has been my pleasure to work in this office for over seven years. I am so grateful for the opportunity to have served in so many roles alongside you. To the zone team, you all are absolutely the best. Our work is intense and high volume, but working alongside you all has made those challenging days bearable. Thank you for making me a better attorney and for the commitment to making Columbus a great city for all. Come on, keep it together. To my new colleagues at City Hall and the members of Columbus City Council, you all have welcomed me with open arms. I've only been on the job for two weeks, but every single person I have met has been more than willing to show me how to get around this amazing building with ease. I'm looking forward to this new role and doing some amazing things for the city of Columbus. To my family, friends, and my village, I cannot say enough about what you all mean to me. Some of you have traveled to be here, so I want to thank you for choosing to spend your Friday afternoon with me. There were so many people that wanted to be here, and they send their love, which is more than I could ever ask. Thank you for being exactly who you all are. We are strong as a community because we believe in the power of working and building together. To my sister, my mom used to tell me this story about when Jenny was born, and anytime we all went somewhere, I made sure to tell everybody that she was my baby. I have always made it my personal mission to look after her. She has evolved into an amazing, strong, and determined woman who I am extremely proud of. To my father, thank you for teaching me the power of hard work. From you, I inherited my work ethic and determination to continuously push myself into uncomfortable and challenging moments. To my mother, my angel, it was important for me to have a representation of her today because she is the reason why I am standing here. She was my biggest cheerleader. From her, I inherited my strength, my strong will, some pretty strong dance moves. I feel like I can dress a little bit in my heart of service. To my husband Cory Favor, my best friend, my travel buddy, my partner in this thing called life, you have been the constant for me and our family for the past 19 years, which is unbelievable because I'm only 12. Thank you for being who you are, witty, funny, hardworking, and committed to helping me reach my highest potential. In honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s life, service, and commitment to eradicating social and racial injustice in our country, there's been a lot of conversation about the importance of legacy, nonviolence, education, eliminating racism, freedom, family. We could converse for hours about Dr. King's legacy and what it meant and what it continues to mean for not only people of color, but its impact on the entire world. I believe the legacy of Dr. King lies in his service. There is a moment that I believe we all encounter, whether we've been called to public service or to medicine, or to parenthood, or to anything that is conceivably beyond our self-imposed limitations. That moment when we're faced with our own reality of who and what we are. A moment when we finally realize that anything great we're ever going to accomplish isn't truly for our own benefit. That the beauty of service lies in our ability to reach beyond ourselves, to remain vulnerable and thus open to peeling years of failure, fear, and rejection with the sole intent to expose insecurities that have the ability to impede our ability to make decisions that are good for all and not just for ourselves. Now, I understand that this could be an unpopular belief, and I'm okay with that. I understand that there are levels to service. I understand that for some, the call to serve is more important than the possibility of failure and humiliation. That the reality of going to jail, putting your family in harm's way, being subjected to ridicule, hate, and even death is nothing more than a burden you must carry in order to do this important work. I believe the body of Dr. King's work reflects this very notion. Thinking about my journey to this moment, I understand that every success, every failure, every loss, every setback, every twist and turn was all a part of the refining process. You see, my decision to pursue this appointment was not based in vanity. And I know in this day and age, it's hard to separate politics from celebrity and the need to feed power and ego. But my decision to pursue this appointment was based on my call to serve, to use my experiences in life, both good and bad, to advocate on behalf of those, not from a place of privilege, but from a place of mutual understanding, that when I speak about healthcare and health in general, that it's rooted in a place of being a caregiver to my parents, fighting hospitals, navigating medical providers, and pushing back on insurance companies for decent healthcare. That when I speak about education, that I'm speaking from a place of taking in young family members that were let down by the education system. That when I speak about housing, that I know firsthand about the realities of living paycheck to paycheck, the pain of foreclosure and living in and out of shelters. I know the challenge that lies ahead may be tough and at times downright cruel, but I'm up for it. And whether I knew it or not, I've always been preparing for it. I'm looking forward to working alongside these dynamic people up here, the leaders of our great city. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm beyond humbled. And I think the only thing left to say is, "All in favor." Thank you.
And if I could just interject, you might get mad at me, but Stefan is also an attorney. He owns his own law firm alongside one of my very good friends, Ms. Ashley Ingram. And he is also a singer, if you cannot tell.
I know why you didn't ask me to do the musical selection. That was incredible. All right, so I think we're nearing the end of the program, and I think we've heard from friends and colleagues of why we're in favor. Right? Is that the slogan? All right, is why we're in favor. So I want to bring up for the blessing Minister Booker and for the benediction Minister Gamble, but to Councilmember Favor and to your family, thank you for letting me be part of this process. And in all seriousness, we're excited to be along for the journey and all the great things.
things that you're going to do.
I just want to congratulate Councilwoman Favor for allowing me to be a part of this day, and thank you for City Council for the invite to be a part of it as well. I went to law school with Shayla as well. It's hard to believe that I've been knowing Shayla for almost ten years now, and I'm just happy to be part of this journey on you. So just as Shayla asked me, and I saw the program that it said a blessing, I thought it was a blessing for the cake and punch at first, and then I saw benediction afterward, so I said that is not what she meant by that. So if you don't mind Shayla, if you come up, and I'll just hold hands with you and Cory at this time, and everyone just agree with these blessings that I speak over, Councilwoman Favor, that does increase in influence, impact, and ideas that will help flourish our city. I pray that everything that you touch is increased, may every idea that you have be beneficial and have impact in our community, and may you use your role as a councilwoman to influence the next generation of service, and servers, and community service in our neighborhood. Bless you. Thank you. Love you, Shayla.
All right, it's time to pray. Amen? Let's pray. Father God, how we thank you for this day, for this is the day that the Lord has made, we will rejoice and be glad in it. How, God, we're thankful for this great, amazing day of history. We're thankful for this young woman, O Lord, who you've placed in a servant heart, Lord, for this community, for this city. We pray over her right now, Lord, that you would bless her, strengthen her, order her steps, O Lord, in the name of Jesus. Pray for her husband as well, Lord. We pray right now, O Lord, that you would bless this council, O Lord. Pray for this president over this council, O Lord. We pray for all these friends, Lord, all this family, O Lord. We pray for everyone that's here today, O Lord, would you bless them, Lord, in the name of Jesus. Now, God, we sit with great anticipation for what you're going to do. God, we know you're going to do something special. Stretch your hands strong in the direction of this young lady, Lord. Bless her, Lord, as she moves, as she opens her mouth, as she uses her hands. Strengthen her, Lord, when she gets depressed, Lord. Let her know you're walking with her, Lord. And we pray right now, Lord, your blessings in favor over each and every one of us, O Lord. May we always be in your presence, and we thank you for it in advance, and it is so, in Jesus's name. Amen.
We have refreshments outside in the lobby. Thank you.
That's the best part.